We have before us our voting file. And the order in which the bills were placed in the voting file is the order in which the bills were sent down to the voting file. At this time, I make a not withstanding motion that we vote in America order. So that way, we can follow along on these bills in case they weren't really put together in the order that they were moved down. It's easier to follow if I just ask that we vote in America.
Thank you. And that motion, no objection, so ordered. Bill number 3-33 LS.
Bill number 3-33 LS, as corrected by the prime sponsor amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy A. Morrison, R.J. Ruspicio, B.T. McCready. An act to amend subsection D of section 5 to 04 of Article 2 of Chapter 5, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the procurement of sports equipment and supplies for youth and community sports programs.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esfaldon.
Yes.
Senator Esfaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio. Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis. Senator Sniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill number 33-33, receive 15 aye votes, one excused absence. Bill number 3-33 LS is duly passed.
Yeah. You have 14? Yes. Fourteen, yes. You have one excuse.
I'm only following what they give me. Fourteen aye, one excused. Bill number 3-33 LS is duly passed. Bill number 7-33 COR.
Bill number 7-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Michael F. Q. Sniklis. An act to add a new section 6225.1 to Article 2 of Chapter 6, Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for a hazardous pay differential for employees of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center in unsafe or dangerous hazardous duty working conditions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Esfaldon.
No.
Senator Esfaldon, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio. Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
No.
Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas.
Bill number 7-33, receive eight ayes, six nays, one excused absence. Bill number 7-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 10-33 COR.
Bill number 10-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to amend subsection D of section 22107 of chapter 22, title 7 Guam Code Annotated, relative to exempting certain public sector allied health professionals from jury duty.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
No.
Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Esfaldon.
No.
Senator Esfaldon, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio.
Yes.
Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis, pass. Senator Torres.
Aye.
Senator Torres, nay. Senator Underwood.
No.
Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Bill number 10-33, receive seven aye votes, seven nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number 10-33 failed for not receiving the required votes to pass. Bill number 11-33.
Bill number 11-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to provide for the healthcare professional pay plan category in the government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014, and reinstate the prior pay plan rate for these positions, and mandate a reassessment of healthcare professionals' salary ranges so as to be competitive based upon national standards.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Esfaldon.
Pass.
Senator Esfaldon, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio.
Yes.
Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Esfaldon. Senator Esfaldon, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Esfaldon, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Bill number 11-33, COR, receive 11 aye votes, three nays, one excused absence. Bill number 11-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 24-33, COR. No. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, there it is. Okay. Bill number 20... 23 should be right under your 24, so, yeah. So, just reverse it.
Seven comes before eight. That's the only time. It's not majority.
23-33, COR.
Bill number 23-33, COR, as amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Mary Camacho Torres. An act to amend subsection A and repeal subsection B of section 3102, and to add new sections 3102.1 and 3131 of chapter 3, and to amend sections 21002, 21004, 21005, and 21006, and to add a new section 21008.2 of chapter 21, all of title 3 Guam Code Annotated, relative to modernizing and streamlining Guam's voter registration requirements and processes, as well as those relating to the Guam Decolonization Registry.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esfaldon.
No.
Senator Esfaldon, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio.
Yes.
Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Pass.
Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis, pass. Senator Torres.
Aye.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
No.
Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Rodriguez.
No.
Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sniklis. Senator Blas.
Aye.
Bill number 23-33, receive nine aye votes, five nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number 23-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 24-33.
Bill number 24-33, COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Frank B. Uggan Jr. An act to add a new subsection C to section 3102, and to amend section 3122 of chapter 3, title 3 Guam Code Annotated, relative to allowing for voter preregistration of persons at least 16 years of age, and amending the report of deaths provision.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas.
Yes.
Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Esfaldon. Senator Esfaldon, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio.
Yes.
Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Esfaldon.
No.
Senator Esfaldon, pass. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Senator Esfaldon.
Aye.
Senator Esfaldon, nay. Senator Sniklis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Bill number 24-33, receive 11 aye votes, three nays, one excused absence. Bill number 24-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 27-33, COR.
Bill number 27-33, COR, as substituted by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr. An act to authorize the payment of merit bonuses to public employees with superior ratings who were not compensated for meritorious performance in accordance with the provisions contained in section 6203 of Article 2, Chapter 6, Title 4 Guam Code Annotated, to require Imagellahin Guahan to identify funding for the merit bonuses pursuant to public law 32-181, to require the Director of Administration to report to Imagellahin Guahan and Illehest Laturan Guahan on compliance with this act, and to require the Director of Administration to otherwise identify an alternative course of action for the implementation of this act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
No.
Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Esfaldon.
No.
Senator Esfaldon, nay. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Ruspicio.
Yes.
Senator Ruspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis, pass. Senator Torres.
Pass.
Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood.
No.
Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat.
No.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Bill number twenty-seven dash thirty-three received five yea votes, nine yea votes, and one excused absence. Bill number twenty-seven dash thirty-three failed. Bill number thirty-nine dash thirty-three LS.
Bill number thirty-nine dash thirty-three LS as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Historic Preservation and further amended on the floor. Introduced by T.A. Morrison, T.R. Munya Barnes, Judith T. Wampat E.D.D., Michael F. Q. Siniklis, Mary Camacho Torres, Frank F. Blas Jr., Brant T. McCready, T.C. Ada, V. Anthony Ada, Frank B. Uggan Jr., B.J.F. Cruz, James V. Espaldon, R.J. Rispisho, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., an act to add a new article four to chapter nine, title twelve Guam Code Annotated, relative to promoting Guam abroad through the establishment of a cultural and sports ambassadors fund.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number thirty-nine dash thirty-three LS received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number thirty-nine dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty dash thirty-three COR.
Bill number forty dash thirty-three COR as substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., an act to amend sections eight-one-zero-seven and eight-one-zero-eight of chapter eight, title seven, section five-one-zero-three-D of chapter five and section six-four-zero-three of article four, chapter six, title seventeen, all of the Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new section five-five-one-zero-two-H of chapter fifty-five, title ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to properly classifying law enforcement personnel of the government of Guam by renaming attendance officers as truancy officers to reflect the practice throughout the United States and to classifying truancy officers appointed as special deputy marshals as law enforcement personnel.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, pass. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Bill number forty dash thirty-three COR received seven yea votes, seven nay votes, one excused absence. Bill number forty dash thirty-three failed. So where did you put thirty-eight then? Okay, you should have just received thirty-eight, so we'll go ahead with it. Thirty-three dash, no, thirty-eight dash thirty-three LS.
Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-three LS as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Michael F. Q. Siniklis and Frank F. Blas Jr., an act to add a new chapter ninety-one to division three of title eighteen Guam Code Annotated, relative to modernizing the business environment by adopting the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act, UETA.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-three LS received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number thirty-eight dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-one dash thirty-three COR.
Bill number forty-one dash thirty-three COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication. Introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, an act to repeal and reenact chapter thirty-five of division three, title five Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting revisions to the Uniform Interstate Family Support Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill, senators, bill number forty-one dash thirty-three COR received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence. Bill number forty-one dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-three dash thirty-three COR. I don't have, where's forty-two? Okay, do you all have forty-two? How did I, how did I not get forty-two? Forty-two dash thirty-three COR.
Bill number forty-two dash thirty-three COR as substituted by the Committee on U.S. Guam Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary.
Forty-two dash thirty-three. Forty-two dash thirty-three. Forty-two dash thirty-three. Okay. Go ahead. Yes. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay. Bill forty-two dash thirty-three COR. Forty-two dash thirty-three. Forty-two. Don't confuse me anymore. Forty-two.
Bill number forty-two dash thirty-three COR as substituted by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready, an act to repeal and reenact section five-eight point six-zero of chapter fifty-eight, title nine Guam Code Annotated, relative to the crime of promoting prison contraband which shall be cited as the Contraband Reform Act of 2015.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. I want to make sure you're listening. Yes. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senators, we're voting and two members are thinking. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Bill number forty-two dash thirty-three COR received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number forty-two dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-three dash thirty-three. That's why she was correcting me all the time. She wanted her bill. Forty-three dash thirty-three.
Bill number forty-three dash thirty-three COR as corrected by the prime sponsor, amended by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives and further amended on the floor. Introduced by N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., an act to amend section three-one-zero-seven of article one, chapter three of title five Guam Code Annotated, relative to standardized testing within the Department of Education.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. The senator is trying to decide how to vote, so please give him space. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Blas, aye.
Bill number forty-three dash thirty-three. Received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence. Bill number forty-three dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. Bill number forty-six dash thirty-three C.O.R. Forty-six dash thirty-three.
Bill number forty-six dash thirty-three C.O.R. As amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development, and substituted and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., R.J. Rispisho, Michael F.Q. Siniklis. An Act to add a new Section six-two-three-five to Article Two of Chapter Six, Title Four, Guam Code annotated, relative to providing a pay incentive to employees of government of Guam, line agencies, the Office of Public Accountability, the University of Guam, and the Guam Department of Education, who have obtained public accountant, government financial management, fraud examiner, and internal auditor certifications pursuant to recognized national standards to preserve the government of Guam's ability to recruit and retain such professionals.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Speaker Wampat.
No. No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
Bill number forty-six dash thirty-three C.O.R. Received eight yea votes, six nay votes, one excused absence. Bill number forty-six dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. On the nom- huh? Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we excuse Senator Uggan from this portion of the voting.
Hearing objections, so ordered. On the nomination of Dr. Lisa A. Basa-Cruz to serve as the education member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms.- I mean, Dr. Lisa Basa-Cruz received unanimous support. I mean, what was it, fourteen? I mean, thirteen. Is that right, everyone? Do you want me to mark my back? All right, wait. Okay, here. So it's, yeah, unanimous here, so. And she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Reina A. Kavu to serve as a member of the Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, Kaha, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Reina Kavu received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Didi Escomacho to serve as a member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Didi Escomacho received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Maria Connolly to serve as the Director of the Department of Labor. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, excused. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye.
On the nomination, Maria Connolly to serve as the Director of the Department of Labor. She received twelve yea votes, one nay vote, two excused absences. Maria Connolly then is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Catherine B. Kekige to serve as a classified governor of Guam, employee member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. One more. Can please somebody check? Senator? No, I got it. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Catherine B. Kekige received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Gregory D. Parrish to serve as a member of the Higontia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your hand. And, thank you. Mr. Gregory D. Parrish received unanimous support, and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ben Anthony B. Rages to serve as a member of the Cockpit License Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Ben Anthony B. Rages received unanimous support, and he is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ann Roth to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Ann Roth received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Caterina Scro to serve as a youth member of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Catherine's- Caterina Scro received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. We have exhausted the list of- on the voting file. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn this session, subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion, hearing objections, so ordered. We are adjourned, subject to the call of the speaker.